Okay, we'll call this meeting to order at 6 o'clock. If folks could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First things first, public comment? Any public comment? Okay, we're gonna flip the agenda around a little bit because we have the Rotary Student of the Month. So, Mr. Hawkins?
So, first let me say, we had, each month, we have one student who goes to the Rotary out of a group of about eight students who are Students of the Month for different teams. You can see over there on the wall, we have November and December put together. We weren't able to move the students for November forward to the Rotary. They didn't have a meeting during December, so they'll be both, both of those students will be going over on the 17th of January. I'll have them, I'll invite them to the next school board meeting, you can meet them in person. Our first Student of the Month was Reese DiNardo, and he wasn't able to make it here tonight. But, you know, teachers give a really positive blurb, you know, description of the student and why they were brought forward. And just for Reese, you know, positive attitude, always giving an incredible amount of effort, helpful, kind, they use words like leadership, volunteerism, creativity, all of those things. So I just want to give a shout out to him even though he couldn't make it. The young man who's standing behind me is Mr. Jack Hafey, and this is the blurb that was written for him. Jack Hafey has been proven to be a leader in both his classes and extracurricular activities. Since joining Shark News in sixth grade, Jack has gone above and beyond in his commitment to the program. He works hard each week to help produce Shark News. Jack has taken a lot of responsibilities as part of Shark News and is a great mentor to other students in the program. In band class, Jack has taken it upon himself to learn songs on his own, even arranging parts for other instrumentalists in class. Jack is a hard worker, dedicated, and continues to make a positive impact on the Hampton Academy community. Now, I can tell you, on Thursdays, if you come down here and you stand outside of the door where Shark News is produced, right up on this stage, you'll have probably about, what, 15, 20?
A lot of kids.
A lot of kids who are in class. And there's one person who is handing out jobs, and Jack is running it. He's up there, he's assigning jobs to people, he's working with all of the other kids and directing everybody around, and I think he still has his tag on him.
No.
Because he'll be walking around during the day, and that's his hall pass, because he'll be taking pictures or interviewing people. So what I asked, when I asked Jack to come, A, I wanted to just introduce you to him because he's incredible, great kid, and, but I also said, can you come up with maybe a couple of things, you know, think about our school and think about some of the positives. But also, from a student's perspective, someone who is, you know, one and a half years into this school but is also a leader and such a positive influence, what are some changes that you think that we may need to have? Or what are some of the things that we could do better? So, I'll let him take over.
Thank you all again for having me. So I'm gonna start off with some things that I'd like to see added to the school. I don't only have a couple, but I feel like just here, the scheduling of clubs, I know personally, I spend from 2:30 to 4:45 here after school on Thursdays, and a lot of the clubs end up falling on Thursdays. And I know we also have a late bus that's offered on Monday and Tuesdays, so I'd like to see some of those shifted over to those days. Also, one other thing that I feel is really important, I think that there should be a life skills or something along that lines class that would teach us, you know. I know there is a cooking club for basic cooking things, but biggest thing is like how to do your taxes, like how to create proper spending habits as an adult, and I feel like that would be another good thing to add. Some of the positives, during my Shark Block, which is an extracurricular activity time, I wrote an article on how, about our advisory block, and I got a lot of positive feedback from students about how they really liked that time. And so I feel like the school board and our advisory board here has been doing a really good job with that. Also, the teachers and staff here are amazing, they're super flexible. I personally, I was out sick the week before school over Christmas break, it's been the first time I'd been sick since third grade, but I was out and the teachers were great with helping me make up work and, you know, scheduling things to make sure I could get all the work into them and not really stressing about getting it quickened done to them. Also, like, again, the administrators, they're super friendly, they're great, the nurse is amazing, even though it's her first year here, I have a great bond with her because I have type 1 diabetes, so I see her three times a day. And again, it's a beautiful building, too. The janitors do a great job of keeping it clean. Anytime I say like, oh, there's a spill in the hallway, it'll be cleaned up before I go to that class again. And I feel like also the teachers, I don't know if this is just a coincidence, but I feel like there's a great balance between work that we do on computers in school and work that's printed out packets or paper. I think that's all I have for today, but another thing that I think we could add or make a quick change to is we have a 25-minute lunch here, and we have three 50-minute core classes and then a 55-minute core classes. And because students have given me such positive feedback, I think, depending on how long students need for lunch or depending on that extra five minutes in the core class, we could take those time off to reassign them to the advisory block. Thank you.
Thank you. Can Dr. Costa, can Dr. Costa get a picture of you and your mom?
I have to say, while they do this, the Jack was one of my very first Storytime kids, he's not listening, that's fine. Jack was one of my very, very first Storytime kids back in the day, and he was, he was in charge of things even then, just, just so you know, especially if there were trains involved.
Just get a couple.
That's good.
I'll hide, I don't want to ruin it. Okay, still adjusting the agenda. Bonnie Heath?
Well, Bonnie is getting set up, if I could. So we are, I really appreciate Principal Hawkins bringing Jack in this evening. One of the things we talked about at our policy meeting was that high schools now around the state as of January 2023 are now required to have a student on their school board. Because we are a pre-K grade 8 district, it doesn't apply to us. That being said, we as superintendents talked about, well, what about pre-K grade 8 districts? What should, what could we do? And we were talking about how we might include some of our middle school students and how we can give them a voice to our meetings. So knowing that the Student of the Month for the Rotary was new this year, I thought that was a great opportunity to not only bring those students to us, to recognize them in our community, but also to hear what they had to say as these leaders in our schools. So first off, congratulations to Jack Hafey for, first off, you and Reese for being the first selected in this new program, but I also appreciate you coming forward and sharing your voice and the voice of Hampton Academy students, because this is something we never want to lose sight of, is what we do here impacts our students each and every day. So to hear directly from our students is something that I know we all greatly value. So just a big congratulations and a thank you again for being here and for speaking so eloquently, and I can see why you are such a leader at Hampton Academy, and I'm just so very proud of you.
I think Jack may end up being maybe a future governor of the state of New Hampshire or something.
Wouldn't that be wonderful?
I mean, we tend around here to, to grow those kind of people, and I think you might be one of them.
Yep.
You're destined for great things, young man.
For sure. Thank you.
Good evening. I want to say, Jack, you're a really tough act to follow, but I agree with everything that was said about you. He may not realize how much he's actually changing the school, but he, I want to know, I want you to know that Jack comes into my program one morning a week for 15 minutes in the morning with our guidance counselors to do mindful activities. He is a leader, he is a good role model for the students in the program, and they really look up to him, and it's been working out amazing, so thank you, Jack. Thank you, Jack. Good evening. I was invited to speak tonight about my nomination for New Hampshire 2023 Teacher of the Year. My journey as a, as a Teacher of the Year candidate began almost a year ago on February 14th. I received the information through an email as I was driving home from a rec therapy appointment, and I literally had to get on my phone and call Bridgette Hughes because I thought it was a mistake or maybe it was a mix-up or something, but she told me it was real, so I happily accepted the nomination and went through the process. So tonight, I'm here to talk a little bit about the process and share with you what I went through, it was a wonderful experience, and also to give you just a small part of my speech so you'll know what it was about. My speech was 35 minutes long, so I'm not going to do that to you tonight, I'm gonna shorten it, I'm gonna try to keep it in 10 minutes, so I'll try not to go too fast, but if you have questions, please feel free to stop and ask me, and I will be happy to answer them if I can. The reason why I accepted the nomination is because I really believe that social emotional learning and experiential education is a good message to share, and I'm hoping that, you know, by sharing this with our governor and the nomination committee and sharing it with the school board, I'm really, really hoping that, you know, the, the program will continue to grow and we will adopt more of these, you know, educational experiences in our teaching for all teachers. So, like I said, I was nominated on February 14th. In March, I was invited to attend a luncheon at the Bridges House in Concord along with the First Lady Valerie Sanunu, Christine Brennan, Deputy Commissioner of the New Hampshire Department of Education, and the Teacher of the Year Committee and the other nominees. I got a chance that, once I was there, to talk about the experiential learning program and how the students benefit from this type of learning environment. After that, in May, I received notification that I had made it from, we began with 144 finalists, the luncheon had 44, and in May, I was notified that I had made it to the semifinalists, which narrowed it down to 10 teachers. And the next step was to prepare for a 30-minute TED Talk to present to the Teacher of the Year Committee in August. So, in August, I went and I prepared my speech along with 10 other people, and we each had 30 minutes to, you know, say what, talk about what we were about and why we were there. On December 8th, I was invited to a Leadership and Education banquet to celebrate the semifinalist and the Teacher of the Year, the Teacher of the Year who was nominated for Teacher of the Year. There, I got my picture taken with our Commissioner of Education, Frank Edelblatt, and Governor Sanunu. So it was a wonderful experience and a really good night that I was happy to be a part of. After meeting with them and talking with them that night, I got some individual time with both of them. I have received emails from Annie Custer and Chris Pappas inviting me to collaborate with them on today's issue in education, and I would be happy to do that if, you know, if I can be a speaker for anyone, I would be more than happy to go up and share the message that I shared that day, and I would like to continue sharing. So I don't want to take a lot of your time tonight, but I would like to talk to you a little bit about my speech. So, as a teacher, as a teacher, I believe the environment significantly shapes perspective. The physical and emotional aspects of my classroom play an instrumental role in students' engagement and motivation. I strive to create a classroom environment where students feel safe, challenged, and accepted for who they are as individuals. My teaching philosophy is similar to Kolb, a pioneer in experiential learning theory, who explained that an educator's job is to create opportunities for students to actively engage and reflect on their growth as both individuals and members of a learning community. Like many teachers, I have always had an innate desire to focus my life on helping others. I've wanted, always wanted to make a difference. However, I didn't feel like I was making a big enough difference until I started this position at Hampton Academy. When I was told I would be starting an experiential learning program for middle school students, I thought, experiential learning? Oh, that sounds like fun, not really fully understanding what I was getting myself into, but excited about the prospect of trying something new. It is fun, don't get me wrong, but it is so, so much more than that. Before taking this job, I always felt like I wasn't doing enough for my students. I was always trying to find ways to help them find success. To me, success is being committed to the process of growth, and these students were struggling and were not very committed. Throughout these years before this job, prior to taking this position, I knew there had to be a better way to engage students that would meet the needs of every type of learner and make them want to get up and come to school every day. For these students, the traditional education system was not working for many of them. I was continuously trying to fit them into a mold, a mold they didn't belong in, in which alienated them further, making them feel like fish out of water. I wanted to give my students more opportunities to participate and learn. I know, to best teach these students, I had to break from my established mindset and think innovatively to meet their needs. Since I have been in this position, my teaching along with my philosophies have changed. What I have learned has changed my thought process and changed my teaching style. I understand the importance of placing more value on developing relationships with students that involves embedding social emotional learning into all experiential activities, and although social emotional learning skills and attitudes cannot be measured by test, I believe facilitating the development of character and moral judgment is just as important as teaching reading, writing, math, science, social studies, and the integrated arts. This slide here is some of the advantages that students have with experiential learning. They speak for themselves. Secondly, learning happens everywhere, not just within four walls. Given the right environment, every child is capable of learning, accomplishing their goals, and fulfilling their dreams. As an educator, my ultimate goal is to help get my students ready for life, for real life, whatever that may be for them, their best personal selves in college or at a job. The best education I can provide is to set up learning experiences where students are given the opportunity to observe, reflect, form knowledge, apply and test concepts, and problem solve through active learning. I believe that the benefits of experiential learning give deeper insights and longer-lasting One of my greatest hopes is that the barriers between special and general education collapse. I would like to see all classrooms become experiential, focused on social emotional learning, rather than those elements being a side note to existing curriculum. If connection to students' pre-existing skills were woven into content-based learning environments, if community connections and real-life learning was assimilated into lessons more frequently, I believe all students would learn more effectively. Changes in education are the bridge between the present and the future. Without change, we cannot create a better tomorrow. Not all students in our classrooms fit into a traditional model of education. We must not limit ourselves to the teaching of the past, but instead support them in the world they have inherited. I believe the experiential learning model is a vehicle for change that will best prepare our students for the 21st century. As John Dewey said, "Give the students something to do, not something to learn," and the doing is of such a nature as to demand thinking, learning, thinking, learning naturally results. I am motivated to teach students how to live their lives in ways that truly make them happy, but I can't do it alone. Just as my classroom is based on the concept of community, on the concept of community, so is my teaching. Without the paraprofessionals in my classroom and the faith of my administration, the ELP could not exist as it does, nor could it develop into the program I see for its future. I have been incredibly fortunate to have the physical space of two adjoining classrooms with flexible seating and a variety of technology and manipulative curriculum materials to meet the new needs of my students. Additionally, I have the support of many general education teachers who I work directly with. I would like to say thank you for the tremendous amount of support I've received during this process. I want to thank Dr. DeSilva Napkin for the nomination, all of you, our administrators, the parents of my students, and my coworkers for the genuine support that you have offered. I'm a little slow in my slideshow, didn't, I'm sure what happened there. 21st century learning, I believe that we need to make some changes for the future. And as Nelson Mandela said, "Education is the most powerful weapon which you can use to change the world." Thank you.
Does the board have any questions? Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Board updates, Budget Committee, Mr. DeLuca?
Uh, there's a meeting on the 12th, which, well, let me get that correct to make sure now. There's a public meeting on the 12th, so if the public would like to attend, I believe it's at 7 o'clock at the Town Hall.
Okay, 7 o'clock?
I believe it's at 7 o'clock.
Town Hall?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, wait a minute, I believe they may have moved that to 6 o'clock, I'll clarify that for you.
But as of now, you think, you think it's 7?
I'm gonna go for the 6, because all our meetings have been at 6 o'clock, so I'm sure that it'll be at 6.
Okay. I, I have it in my notes at 7, but that's okay. We better, can you double check that tomorrow?
Yeah, if you can clarify.
Thursdays meeting is at 6 or 7?
Yes. Oh, I have it 7. We all, yeah.
We all have 7?
I have it at 7, I do.
Okay.
Unless you know, yeah, I have it, in fact, I put it in my board report as well. I believe both of those meetings are at 7.
I published it.
It's currently still on the, the public calendar at 7.
7, okay. We'll go with 7 unless we hear different.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Anything else, Frank, Budget Committee? Frank? Building facilities, Andrea?
Nothing at this time.
Curriculum, Andrea, Wendy?
Well, I think, I think we're just, I know there's a meeting tomorrow to start the math curriculum work. I think a lot of people are still, and again, we're a forerunner in this, in SAU 90 project and performance-based learning and assessments. I know a lot of districts are not as far up to speed as we are. Like I said, there's one on math tomorrow, and I think, again, we just continue to work on K through 8 literacy and, and building one year, building standards one year to the next and building upon each thing in a progression. So, again, I think we're doing a really great job at keeping our curriculum on the move. It's never just stagnant, and we're always sort of keep, yeah, keeping it going forward and trying to give the, the best that we can from everything we learn.
Policies, Ginny, Wendy? I know we have a few to do tonight.
Yep.
Anything else?
Nothing.
Okay. Professional development?
No.
Ginny? No? PTA, Wendy?
The only thing I have for PTA, they didn't meet, we didn't, there was no public meeting in December, but they are meeting next week. And just to remind everybody that the Wizards game is coming back, and that will be on Monday, April 3rd, and I believe there may be a bake sale fundraiser for the 8th grade. So there'll be more details on that and when tickets will be available, that kind of thing.
Okay, and Rec Department, Wendy?
Probably the biggest announcement about the Rec Department is that the Rec Department itself has moved into their new building, which is just opened, it is essentially kind of next to, a little behind the Tuck Building, and so Renee and his staff have moved in over there, and it's a beautiful space, and they are, they're loving it, but looking forward to their community center.
Nothing for scheduling?
And nothing for Steering Committee.
How about, how about Master Plan?
Uh, that, the Master Plan, they'll be putting their final touches on that plan, and they will be presenting, I believe, the first week in February, so I can get back to you on that.
Okay.
But they are finalizing the plan.
And Wellness?
Well, I know the Wellness Mental Health Team, you know, continues to work on protocols for both students and staff, so I know that that's continuing. But I wanted to take a minute, just one other thing, I think yesterday was School Resource Officer Appreciation Day, and I just want to say, we have amazing school resource officers, and we thank them very, very much for all they do for our students and staff and, and out in the community as well. Thank you, School Resource Officers.
Principal reports, Mr. Lannan?
Good evening, everyone, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Glad to be here tonight. Just a couple of things, you've had a chance to read my newsletter and my board report, a couple of highlights. We continue to work, as Andrea said, in language arts and mathematics, both building-based and district-wide, coupled with our continued work with New Hampshire Listens and our second cohort for social emotional. Strong focus through the winter months continues on Zones of Regulation as well. We have some grade level, whole grade level presentations that went extremely well, so we're excited to continue with that. Our after-school activities are beginning this month, and will be carrying on through the spring. We're starting with Lego Club. Each month, a grade level will be highlighted for our annual Lego Club, which is a huge hit. 50 students have signed up for Grade 2 already, and then the following month will be Grade 1, and the following month after that will be kindergarten, always a big, big hit. Music after-school program is starting as well, and in the springtime, we'll be having an art and also a computer program. So back to running our after-school programs, which is So, back to running our after-school programs, which is really, really important. Strong focus, beginning of a new year, always on school safety. That's always been my motto and my theme at Center School. It's the highlight of our January staff meeting. We continue to focus on what's current and current practices in school safety, what drills we need to do, what drills we still need to do, what are the types of drills. So, that was a big hit at a staff meeting in January, so that will continue to be a focus. And lastly, I know January starts the conversation of preparation and planning for the following school year, and our kindergarten information night has been scheduled. It's on, it will be posted on the website, and it will be posted on the social media. It's going to be March 21st. We'll have parents in to talk about kindergarten programming for the 2023-24 school year. From there, they'll get registration packets. We're working with Amber and Tim on streamlining some of that, but we'll get, pass out registration information, schedule registration appointments for later on in the spring. And later on in the spring, I'll also start giving you preliminary numbers about folks that have signed up for kindergarten. So, any questions?
Before we have questions, why don't we accept this $930 check from Gaskis? I would move that we accept that. Seconded, Frank. Don't think we need much discussion. All in favor? And then, on the other side, we had a check for $504 from Hannaford. Frank moved to accept that. Ginny, second. I don't think we need much discussion on that. All in favor? Okay, so we have those accepted. And questions for Mr. Lannan?
There was an incident last, probably, I think it was yesterday or the day before, which affected a first grader.
Correct.
Has that been discussed at the school? Is that brought up?
We brought it up at the staff meeting a little bit about that, and we reassured the staff of our safety measures in place and our resource officer that is in the building, and all that we can do to stay vigilant and make sure that we stay aware of what's going on. Hopefully, that was just a very tragic, isolated incident, an accident, but again, we have to, as educators, always be prepared for any type of breach, whether it be from outside or an internal breach. So, we continue to have a strong focus on that, and safety is a priority. That's all I can say on that. But yes, we, we were made aware of it, and it did shake the staff a little bit, yeah. Thank you, Ginny.
Any other questions for Mr. Lannan?
Thank you all. Have a great night.
Thank you. Mr. Sadler?
Hello. Just a few highlights on my board report. Right now, our fifth graders are participating in Get Your Math Games On. It's a before-school extended learning opportunity put on by three of our fifth-grade teachers. The focus is really on fact fluency and automaticity, and also, it's a fun way to have hands-on, you know, math games and problem-solving, so just one of the ways we're trying to continue to focus on some of the skill deficits we've noticed, you know, as we're doing data reviews throughout the year. So, I'm just a great opportunity, really glad that fifth grade is putting that on for those students. Our ski club began last week. We had a phenomenal week one for a week one of ski club. It can be bumpy at times, but we're looking forward to maybe getting some winter weather sometime before the program ends. But it was successful, and just a big thank you to all the parents that come out, you know, between the people that help us in the lodge, help us on the lifts, all over the slopes, are transporting equipment for us. It's a massive undertaking, and we wouldn't be able to do it without our parent chaperones and volunteers, so just a big thank you to them. Our spelling bee will happen on Wednesday, January 18th. We're glad, after a two-year virtual scenario, that we get to be live and back in person with the fifth graders and their families as we celebrate that, so we'll bring those winners, as we tend to, to a future board meeting, but that will be taking place then, and we'll obviously have it posted on our local channel as well. And our final thing, two things. The Great Kindness Challenge is taking place from January 23rd to 27th. We've, you know, celebrated this at Marston School as long as I've been there that I can remember. We always do a big kindness kickoff challenge. It's, you know, just a way to get kids doing nice things for one another, and the nice thing about it is it gives them 50 kind acts they can do. They're all free, and instead of it just being, thinking about this week, the really, the hope is that now you have 50 things you can do anytime, any day, for anyone, inside or outside of school. So, hopefully, at home, you see a little more kindness sprinkled in, and then here at school as well, which is always a good thing. And the last thing is, we're hoping to run our Wicked Wonderful Wednesday program. It takes place through the PTA for five Wednesdays, usually in March-ish, sometimes February. We're limited on parent volunteers this year, so if there's a parent out there who has a skill set or something they'd love to teach children for five consecutive Wednesdays for about an hour after school, you know, just reach out to the Marston School, and we'll be glad to point in the right direction in terms of PTA contacts. But it's a phenomenal program. We hope to keep it going. We just, we need support, we need people out there, so if there's someone out in the community that has a skill set or something they love to do and they want to share that with kids, let us know. Otherwise, I'm open to questions.
Questions for Mrs. Sadler?
Thank you.
All right, have a great night.
So, I'm sorry, Nathan.
Oh, checks.
Oh, I'm sorry, checks.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a check in here. Check for $901 from Gaskis. Andrea will move that. Frank, second. Any discussion? All in favor? And there's another one, $321 from Hannaford. Moved, Wendy, seconded Andrea. All those in favor? So, we've done those. Thank you, Frank.
No problem.
Okay, Mr. Hawkins?
Good evening again. As you can see on my board report, we included some of the great things that were going on during December, our plays, band concert, chorus concert, really getting back into the wonderful things that we were able to do in the past. We too had our first ski club on last Friday. Trip up was great, trip home was a little white-knuckle, but everybody made it. The kids had a great time. I saw them out there, everybody was smiling, and a lot of our kids stay, because it's night skiing, they'll stay there until 9:30, 10 o'clock at night. And after a full day of school, they're adolescents, they can handle it, and it was just great to see them in the wild, I guess you could say. But I had a lot of fun skiing with them, and I look forward to four more weeks. So, I did want to let you know that we conducted our spelling bee over the last couple of weeks, narrowed it down to some students at different grade levels. So, the following students will be participating in the Hampton Academy School Spelling Bee on Wednesday, January 18th, after school in the library. They're the top finishers for their grade-level spelling bees. Dylan Deneve, Shaden Lambert, Lilly Basset, Lilly Costa for sixth grade. For seventh grade, Ella O'Brien, Molly Rufus, and Kit McManus, eighth grade, Stella Finnegan, Olivia Rurick, and Will Kudalitis, thank you very much. So, please, swing by. It'll be right after school, around 2:30, and it's, it's really amazing watching them spell the words that they do. They know a lot, so.
We're going to keep you up here for field trip stuff.
Works for me.
But any questions on his board report?
I have a quick question.
Wendy?
Have we rescheduled pajama day yet? Because I heard it was an issue.
We, we did, we did. We rescheduled it for last Friday, so we had.
We've had it already.
Pajama day, ugly sweater day. Some students wondered if they had to wear both, if it was okay if they just wore pajamas, so, or if they wore an ugly sweater, did they have to wear pajama bottoms? So, we worked it all out, and then we went skiing, so it's great.
Okay, field trip update.
I handed out a packet earlier. The front cover is pretty much what you saw last week with just some different numbers on there. And then, the back sheet is, the back couple pages are the actual accountings for each of the students. One thing that we haven't done yet is we have accumulated fundraising money for students. We haven't applied that to the students yet. We're holding on to it. We don't need to yet. There's no rush, and we want to make sure that we're going to get everything taken care of and then send it in. On here, when I presented last month, what I said was, we have about 19 students who asked for different levels of financial aid for the trip. Conservatively, what I said was, that means that they would, the number that I was looking for was the exact number for 19 trips to be paid for. Going through the accounting, you can see I've subtracted some money because some of the people who have said, you know, we do need some assistance, have already made payments. So, that number shows right there. So, it's a little bit more of an accurate depiction of some of the aid that might be requested. The MV students, we have five MV students, that was adjusted a little bit. I think it was a little bit higher last month, but again, we have a little bit more of an accurate depiction of what funds are actually needed. Cash raffle, you saw that last month. Each student received, because of the cash raffle, around $100 apiece, subtracted from the 19. Hampton Academy budget, and then from the Los Canteros and Yeti fundraising, another $450 was added to that. And so, we're working our way. We have another couple of fundraisers coming up, so chipping away at it. I think we're doing pretty well.
Any questions for Mr. Hawkins? Thank you.
No, it seems pretty doable.
Hundred percent.
That's right.
Hundred percent.
Thank you, Ken. Dr. Hampton?
Good evenings. Nice to be here. You do have my report, and I'm happy to say that our referrals have finally settled down, so that's, that's a really good thing. We were having a few months of a lot of referrals, but all in all, we're doing, we're doing great in our department. Thanks to the principals for supporting our staff and doing all the right things for us. We have a new transportation company. It's going well. It was a little bumpy the first couple of days, but we had a meeting and it all turned right around, so it's really, really nice to be working with them. And just wanted you to be aware of the shared grant-funded position, the Early Intervention Outreach Specialist. They haven't been hired yet, but it's a joint venture between SAU 21 and 90. We pool our grant funds and hire a person to work with all of us on preschool programming for all in the, in the area, the whole Seacoast. We're organizing our files. Pretty exciting stuff going on here. No, it's really important. We did get some kudos for the organization of our files, so I want to make sure all our files are in order. Other than that, I'm good. I will entertain questions.
Any questions, Frank?
Can you elaborate on, you had an increase in charter school? Actually, you had one.
Yep.
And you had an increase in the out-of-district placement. How's that going to impact your budget moving forward?
So, that's a great question, and we're going to talk a little bit about that in non-public session tonight. The increase in the charter school is, as you know, parents are able at any point to take their child out and put them in a charter school, and that's what happened. If it's identified, then it goes on our list. So, Great Bay Charter School is the nearest one, and we had a parent that made that choice. So, now, we do need to provide special ed for that child in that charter school, so we work very closely with them, we case-manage them, and we'll, on all likelihood, we'll provide remote services for the child at the charter school.
Right, but we still have to provide services.
We are obligated to provide special education services while they're in the charter school, yep.
And then, the out-of-district placement, that's going to impact your budget significantly since we did budget, and did we take that into account for next year?
Well, no, and that is what happens in special education when things happen in special education. We are, we, we're going to talk about this later. I can give you lots more details.
Okay.
Is that what accounts for the increases for, let's see, and?
Yes, if you've seen the encumbrance go up, correct, yes.
Okay, all right.
Yep.
Because I saw two places where.
Yep.
Yes.
And under law, we, it doesn't matter, whoever shows up at our doorstep, we are obligated to make sure that they receive an education, and even if that means that it is an out-of-district placement, or they have any extenuating needs or circumstances, it doesn't matter what the budget is, it is our obligation to ensure they get a free and adequate education. That's just part of what we do. But we're going to talk about the specific case in a bit, which increased the out-of-district placement. But thanks for asking.
Thank you.
Wendy?
Just a quick question. The early intervention position?
Yes.
Who will their employer be? Will it be us?
It's mostly, it's usually housed at, in SAU 21. We have had, the position's been around for years.
Okay.
Yeah, it's been, and 21 holds the finances of it, and then we send them some grant funding, and they put it toward the position.
Okay, cool.
That Jackie Furman's position?
Yes, yes, it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll see you in a little bit.
Yes, you will.
Let's see, we have Amber?
So, we've had a busy month. Now that everything's back in full swing, Nick has been really working hard on videoing all of our amazing performances and activities that have been going on throughout the district between holiday concert plays, special activities. We've been very busy trying to capture all the exciting things that are going on. We also have two resources that Dr. Costa has put out in her newsletter, but I just want to highlight those for Hampton families. We've partnered with the New Hampshire Department of Education. Tutor.com is available for all of our middle school students. It's a one-on-one student tutoring time anywhere. They can access that in their Clever Portal, and that is up and running for all students at Hampton Academy. And then, there's also a Waterford Upstart Online Learning Program that is available for preschool students, and they can register on there, and that was in a newsletter, and there's information on our website about that. We've also done a lot of updating at all three buildings with their Promethean boards, Chromebooks, you name it, it's that time of year where everything needs updates. We've also started looking at the bidding process for our Chromebooks that we'll be ordering over the summer to replace the ones that are going to be end-of-life for next school year. And that's about it.
Any questions for Amber, Andrea?
So, the tutor.com, that's just for middle schoolers, like fourth and fifth graders wouldn't be able to access this, or it wouldn't be appropriate for them?
It wouldn't be appropriate for them. It's really more towards middle school and high school at this time. We're still working with the Department of Ed to try to find some other resources for tutoring. There are some available, but we're trying to make sure that they're vetted, and that's one thing that we're really trying to make sure is that the people that are tutoring one-on-one with the students, we want to have, like, a background check and make sure that they're secured. We have Homework Club available at Marston School that students do have access to, and we have that here at Hampton Academy as well.
So, is it being advertised, this tutor.com with students? I mean, so students are well aware that this is available, and this is how you get it, and they could even do it during the after-school academic support time if they wanted? I mean, if... Okay, all right. I just want to make sure. Okay, alright, I just want to make sure the kids know. And, I guess we just need to really keep getting that information out to parents of the, for the Waterford Upstart Outreach. I mean, that, wow, families could get free laptop, and we just really want to push that.
Yeah.
As much as possible.
Yeah, it's been in Lois's, Dr. Costa's newsletter several times in the last couple of weeks. So, all the information is there, the link is there, and it is up on our website. We can post it again tomorrow to make sure it's available, and we can post it out on Facebook as well for everybody.
And I would say Emily should get that information out.
She has it.
Yes, she has it.
Okay.
And I believe, Principal Lannan, where you have some of those preschoolers, I believe, it went out to all families, but I know that you and I had a specific conversation about it, too. Yep, so they're aware, preschoolers are aware, because that's, that's the group it impacts. So, we are, and I know that we, we had, her name was actually Jeannie Ryan. We actually had her reach out to Village Preschool. I had her reach out to the daycare centers, preschools in our area. Yep.
I was just gonna say, did you, were you, you're on top of that?
Yep, including, yep.
You've got it, and the other preschools have it, okay.
Yep, we did. We tried, I gave her the names of all of our area preschools, including Robbins and also...
Imprints.
And Imprints, yep. So, we tried to, just because we know this is a wonderful opportunity, and what it is, is it's all grant-funded, but the grant expires in January. And so, what Jeannie Ryan was saying is, "I've got these computers and I'm trying to get them in hands of kids." And that's why it was, it's, it's just so important, right? That if we can get these in the hands of children, it could be a wonderful jumpstart for our preschoolers.
Any other questions for Amber?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Dr. Costa?
Okay. Just thinking about our goals in terms of working with all of our stakeholders and making sure we're keeping everybody apprised of what we're doing. Obviously, the continuing of our policies is something that's keeping us busy, and we're also looking at a way for our families, community members, stakeholders to have access to seeing these policies. So, we are working through that as we speak with the board and with the SAU offices, because we recognize that some of these policies may be of interest to folks, and certainly, you're always welcome to call my office and speak with me or reach out to me, and I'm always willing to have a conversation or share anything that you might want to see. But I think we're going to talk about that in just a bit, about that. So, that's on our mind, because there are a number of policies, laws that are being passed that do impact our schools and every day, so look for that information coming shortly. As we talked about, our public hearing is scheduled for Thursday, and that will be at seven o'clock. And then, we have another one scheduled in February 6 at seven o'clock. We have the public hearing, as you know, January 12 in our Hampton Academy at 7:00 p.m. And deliberative session is scheduled for Tuesday, Tuesday, February 6 at 7:00 p.m., also here at Hampton Academy. So, please mark your calendars, and please come out if you have interest and want to hear what the budget does look like next year. On December 21, as Wendy had said, Mrs. Rager, that we had a wonderful ribbon-cutting for our community slash senior center. We're just so happy for Renee Boudreau and everyone else there in the celebratory accomplishment. On January 25, we will join SAU 21 for a legislative roundtable to discuss some of the proposed bills and their impact on the schools and districts. Right now, there are, you're not gonna believe this when I say the number, it's shocking. There are about 800 pieces of legislation that are currently in Concord. Over 200 are aimed specifically at House Ed. So, you can see there is a lot of discussion in Concord that's going on that will, potentially could impact our schools, so trying to work with our legislatures on that. That meeting, I believe, starts at 6:00 p.m., and it will begin with some pizza, and then, of course, conversation, and that will be, our school board is invited, as are all of the school boards at SAU 21 and all of our local legislatures. So, we hoping that there'll be a nice turnout for that event. To continue on with our goal of having our physically, emotionally, and safe learning environment, and we heard from not only Jack Hafee, our Rotarian of the Month, our Student of the Month, but we also heard from our Teacher of the Year semifinalist, how important social-emotional learning is. And I want to just let you know that our suicide prevention team did develop a draft of a decision tree, including a screening tool based off the Virginia Threat Assessment Plan. And it looks at specifically lines of communication and outcomes. So, just continuation of the work that we're doing. And thinking about curriculum, we have, tomorrow, we will have a district math team. We'll work at defining our K-8 math curriculum and ensuring that it is aligned, aligned both vertically and horizontally. And, one of the things that you are probably all aware of is that we're currently looking at early learning at this time. Last month, we met and focused on drafting a mission statement and having continued conversation about what that potentially could look like for our community. Tomorrow night, there is a New Hampshire Listening Planning Session at seven o'clock. It will be virtual. It is for those that have been working with New Hampshire Listens, specifically at Equity. We're excited for that evening, and I'm thrilled there's not a conflict that night, so I'm looking to attend virtually and to continuing those conversations. They had a very successful evening on December 13. That's focused specifically on how do we have communications at the holiday. So, again, looking at what kinds of programming, what kinds of training we might offer our community to continue to think about how we ensure that we're reaching all of our students and how we can continue to work together. And I guess the last thing I would say is, it is with, with great sadness that I missed our first ski club on Friday night. I heard it was a wonderful evening. Over 200 students hit the slopes. That includes children at Center and at Hampton Academy, I'm sorry, children at Marston and Hampton Academy siblings that might be at Center did join them, but heard it was a wonderful evening, and I'm keeping my fingers crossed that the rain and the warm temperatures stays away for Friday so that we can continue to have another evening this Friday. The only other things that I have are, there are some more donations that we have received that, if we could...
Yeah, we could do those now.
Awesome. So, we did receive a $500 donation, specifically from the Big Bad Food Truck for $500. And specifically, it is for school lunches.
Someone want to move that?
Yes.
Ginny, move it. Second. Frank, saw you first. All those in favor? Okay.
Thank you. And then, we had another wonderful donation for $500 for the outreach, Hampton Police donation for our outreach program. So, again, special thanks to Hampton Police and their donation. We appreciate them.
Get a motion. Moved Wendy, seconded Frank. All those in favor? Ginny? Yep.
Great, that went to our, yep, that went to our giving tree. And then, we had another generous donation of $2,000 for our outreach account from a Hampton resident, and I don't know if that's an anonymous donation. Mrs. Curtis, could you, is that an anonymous donation, the $2,000 one?
That anonymous.
Did I see that one?
You, you gave it to me.
You're the one that donated.
I just don't want to say her name if we don't know.
I'd say the name.
Alright, well, special thanks to...
I don't believe it was anonymous.
Okay, Carol Rodenberg. We thank you for your donation, a very generous donation for our outreach account for $2,000, so... Very nice.
Want to move that? Moved Andrea. Second. Ginny? All those in favor? It's a very generous donation.
It is, and that's all I have.
Any questions for the superintendent? Okay. Mariah?
Okay. It is January, and January brings W-2s, 1099s, and 1095Cs for our office. So, that's what we're, my office is working on right now, and hopefully, we'll be able to have all the reports to the teachers by next Friday. That's the goal. You saw the new budget report. Everything has been updated and encumbered again, so hopefully, that's where we stand for now. Food service, if you noticed, I put in a little bit more information for food service for you this month. We are working on excess fund balance. We had an excess fund balance from the past two years that have rolled over from the Feed Students Free, that they gave us excess amount of their normal amounts for each meal served. So, we have an excess fund balance, and what we opted to do with that money is not put the rates up for the cost of lunch or breakfast this year. And we, if you notice, had a, we have a significant, right now, deficit. So, that excess fund balance would cover that. It would cover all the costs of the, the materials to make that lunch. So, that is what I'm working on with the state. We just needed to let them know how we're gonna spend that fund balance down, and, and we opted to utilize it to pay, to keep feeding the students at a reasonable price. Hoping that we can keep some of that fun, you can only keep up to three months of expenses when you roll over fund balance, so I'm hoping to utilize some of the funds left over for next year and not put the rates up tremendously. That's the goal, but we'll get closer to that, closer to the end of the year. Mary, Keith and I are also working on, they just put a grant out for food service for equipment. Not sure if we'll get it, but we are looking at some of our very old equipment, that's refrigerators that have been out for over 20 years, and looking at the cost of them, how long, and then, we're gonna apply for that grant, just to see if, it's worth it to us to try to apply for it. So, we're working on that for food service. Other than that, I have two major revenues that came in. One was our CATAid check that comes in every year, and that was $236,430. That is refunded of all expenses from last year that in June, we have to put together, send in, and we get a percentage of the funds back.
Special ed?
Special ed, mhm.
Catterfall?
CATAid, yep, special ed. So, that was the final number, and we got that check in. We also received unanticipated revenue from the New Hampshire Retirement System, and that was $135,141. That is based on legislation that was required that a one-time state retirement, the state had them reimburse 7.5% of employer contributions to go back to the schools and towns to offset expenses and taxes. So, we got that one, and that will go into our unanticipated revenues for the year.
Basically, this money goes back to the town?
Yep.
Can you say those two one more time, so that people know?
We're always working on this stuff. Did you notice that?
Could you just repeat those?
Yes, so, $236,430 for CATAid, and then, New Hampshire Retirement is $135,141. So, CATAid, I did, in revenues, I do a percentage of what I expect to come back. So, it was about half of that, so half of that is definitely full revenue. That's exciting. And then, I talked about food service. Frank already reminded you about our public hearing on Thursday, and grants are enclosed, and grants are also, the Estor Grant has been updated on the website, so check that out. Also, please check out our website if you have any questions on our budget. That is all been updated. And then, once Thursday's meeting is completed, I will do the sign-worn articles and other reports up on the website.
Any questions for Mariah?
Yes.
Ginny?
Okay, you're saying we got $195,000 for food and milk you're putting in? So, does that wipe out the $129,759 we're projected to be over, under?
Yes.
So, we don't have to worry about...
So, we're not gonna have to worry about our shortage, no. This will cover everything.
Okay, have we figured out a way to prevent the shortage from going forward next year?
No, we will definitely have to look at our costs.
We'll have to look at increasing prices.
Yes.
Yeah.
We haven't done it in the past three years because we knew we had this, well, for two, it was free. This year was the first year, and we didn't want to, like, increase it.
Right.
And I knew that we had that fund balance sitting there, but we will have to talk about that.
So, just to reiterate what Ginny said, it's more than likely that we were going to be in the red, but with this, I'm gonna call it a windfall.
Yep.
We're gonna be in the black.
Yep.
Okay?
Yep, this year.
Hopefully.
This year, hopefully.
Hopefully.
If, if we're not, I wouldn't anticipate we would be too much in the red.
No, if not, we, we, it would be close.
Unless sales plummet.
Unless sales plummet.
Which they have this year so far.
Yep, so, it's something that I'm paying attention to. I, there's a tool that we have to do at near the end of the year to calculate where our, it's a state tool, to where our food should be. We're also looking at what the costs are around the surrounding areas for rates first, because we don't want to be way above, so it's something that we're working on, to bring to you.
Other thing I think we have to think about, if we kept the prices the same and sales are plummeting, if we up the right rate, they're not gonna go up. So, what, what can we do to keep kids fed and still be at an affordable cost for, I mean, still be in a budget?
I want to just, just ask the question, if, if, if we somehow ended up in the red this year, we could use some of that retirement, no, we can't. That has to go?
That has to go.
Okay.
Can I?
Well, you have... I just wanted to make sure.
That's the fund balance, yeah.
Explain that, so the public understands that.
Anything that's unanticipated revenues have to go back to the town as a fund balance. And the town uses that to offset taxes, yes.
But, in looking at it, we held prices for a number of reasons. One, we were going through covert. We were coming out of covert, and we were being funded by the federal government on food allowances. Since that time, obviously, everybody has felt the pinch. Now, food costs have dramatically increased.
Right.
We're 12%, I think you had in your numbers, and I think we're at 310 on average. So, that would make it somewhere in the neighborhood of about a 35, 40 cent increase, somewhere in between that, and that would severely impact the community and the kids that mostly need these hot lunches. Though, I think what we're gonna, and we never take that type of an increase, ever. We always look for ways to offset that, and I think when we go into it for next year, we're gonna have to look at that.
That will definitely be an agenda item.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm not sure.
Because if it does go in the red next year, you have to remember, if it goes in the red, then the fund balance has to cover it, and so...
Yeah.
Yep.
One more quick question. Am I correct that, has legislation come through that this summer, there is gonna be money for meals for students during the summer?
That's my understanding.
I have not received anything permanently explaining that as of yet, but that is the...
Is that all students, or is that just free and reduced lunch, kids?
I haven't received all the information.
I believe it was all summer school students.
All summer school students.
Maybe that's, we'll see it, we'll believe it when we see it.
Yeah.
Once, if I get that, I will let you know as soon as possible. I can also inquire on it.
Yeah, could you?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for Mariah? Okay. We're down to policies. BCA, Board Member Ethics Discussion. I don't...
That was requested.
Okay.
To be placed on our agenda.
No, I think, isn't this what I brought up at the last board meeting?
Yes, you said it'd be... Yes, you said it be included.
Right. And there was a couple of areas that I was concerned about.
Correct.
All right, I was concerned about paragraph two and paragraph eight.
Number two, understand that the board is governing body, is that the one?
Yep.
Does not manage the district, but rather sets the board broad goals and standards for the district by way of policies adopted by a quorum of the board at proper meetings under the right to know law.
And number eight.
Respect the confidentiality of information that is privileged under applicable law or is received in confidence or non-public session.
Because some of our discussions deal with personnel. They are done in non-public, and sometimes that information miraculously finds its way in the community. Any comment?
It does.
Well, we've had, we've had a couple of issues.
Yes.
Okay. Last year, we were looking at personnel issues in April. We made some comments, some recommendations in non-public, and then the next day or two, they miraculously found their way at a school meeting. So I was a little concerned about that, word for word, in one of those situations.
I think our chairman has a great explanation for that. What do you always say, Les?
I always say that three can keep a secret if two are dead.
Yep. That's right.
However, I think it would behoove all of us to take a good look at this policy and try to adhere to it. And just as an aside, if you look at this BCA/R.
We've never signed that.
No, we never have. Just...
Oh, well, we have it. Let's have it.
Okay, so that was that one. Then we have...
It's just adopted in April of 2022.
This one?
The RBCAR, which is the Ethics Acknowledgement.
Yeah.
Yep. So since you all have one in your pocket, if you want to sign it and pass it to me...
What, this? I just wrote all over it.
All right. We'll get you a nice clean one.
We can, we can.
Oh, no, I didn't write on that.
She's saying if you want to sign that and give it to her.
Yeah, I think we should do that at the next board meeting.
Okay.
Or we can do it now.
Or we can do it tonight.
She's saying we've got it in front of us, do we want to sign it and pass it to her?
Yeah, I'm going.
I don't, I don't have a problem.
And maybe what we'll do is get that on the rotation, so it is on our August or September or July. We'll do an August/September meeting, where we'll put it in. How does that sound? So that way...
Now, can I, can I, can I just make a recommendation? Can we wait for the March meeting? Because here's the reason, we only have one vote, we're going to have to sign it again in March.
Right.
Yeah, that's fair.
We have elections.
I would do it so you have it for the rest of the year.
All right, so you want to sign it now and then again in March?
We'll sign it in.
Sure.
Well, we can have that one person sign it, or we can have them sign it in...
I already dated it, now and in March.
Well, there we go.
Well, they have to come to me.
Yeah.
They all have to come over to me.
Yep.
There you go. Oops, sorry.
I'm going to put it in my calendar, okay? As a repeating event, we'll get it.
Got it.
We'll have to move our March date anyways because of the conflict with voting.
Yeah.
Yep. Finish this first.
Okay, and while I'm finishing up with this, we should look at Policy FF renaming.
Thank you. I will, no problem.
We talked about it last time.
We did. This is the naming.
We did pretty extensively revise it.
Right, and this came to us from...
So what we did was, we had a policy on the books already.
Yeah.
And we also got an updated policy from the NHSBA.
Yeah.
And we essentially combined the two.
Can you tell the public what it is we're talking about?
Sorry, so it's, our policy's from last month.
Oh, last time, okay, got it.
Yeah, so FF. So essentially, this is related to the naming of district buildings and facilities and dedication of areas. So it is the, you know, it's the Joe Smith Memorial Library, things like that. We wanted to have a good policy in place for how to, how to name those kinds of areas. And a lot of the things that we kept, I felt were actually very thoughtful from the previous policy. We kept particularly some of the language around fundraising, around, what was the one that we used? There was one particularly that we used specifically for the Evan Austin thing at the school. I'm trying to remember what that was. If anybody, if you guys want to read through it, if you have any questions, it's a lot of language.
Yeah, I only had one question, and it was on B5. Sorry, B. Did I have it right? And I'm not against this, but I, it says, "Before making any final decision regarding naming or renaming, the board shall solicit input from students and staff." And I'm not against either one of those, but it, for example, the one that we just did, I don't think we solicited input from students.
No. Let's see, this is general guidelines. I would say if we didn't, it's not end of the world.
No.
That was not a school building.
Yeah.
It was a little bit different.
Right.
Happy to take that out, if anybody has any feelings about it.
About may solicit.
Yes, instead of shall.
Yeah, that might be, that might solve it.
That's a good change.
Yeah.
Okay. I just happened to notice that.
Yes.
Okay, so, someone want to make a motion? This is a second read. Frank?
I'll make a motion to accept it.
This is Policy FF, seconded Wendy. Further discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Okay. And then we have JICA, Student Dress Code. This is a second read.
Once we adopt it, is this going to be enforced?
I think, well, do we want, do we want to talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, I think we should. I mean, I think, why don't we both of us go a little bit?
Yeah.
So this was, part of the reason we readdressed it, or addressed it, is Lois and I both had received several comments and questions and requests from parents about our current student dress code. Among other things, it is really fairly discriminatory, to be honest. It doesn't make any exceptions. For instance, head coverings, it didn't make any exceptions for religions that may require their students to wear headgear, nothing like that. And essentially, it was, it was really out of date. So the new one is much more updated. It's, it is definitely, I think people are going to think it's a little more relaxed. I mean, I think part of the issue is that, you know, we're going to let, we want to make sure it's not discriminatory based on religion, based on sex, and we also want to make sure that, that parents are comfortable making decisions for themselves and their families.
It still says, "Students must not wear caps, hats, or other headgear."
So if I could, so if I could weigh in on it just a little bit? So we actually had a really good conversation with Will Phillips at the School Boards Association about this policy. And what, what Will said was, so when the New Hampshire School Boards Association comes up with a district policy, they want to make sure that the policy is written so you are being respectful and not discriminating against any protected class. He said, "The purpose for writing a policy," and I thought this was, I liked the way he explained it, "it needs to be general enough to meet the needs of all your schools, yet flexible enough for each school. For example, you may, at Centa School, have students that might wear spaghetti straps, right? We know that our preschoolers, our kindergarten, that might be very appropriate. However, at a middle school, maybe it is, maybe it isn't." So what he said, or what he recommended was that you take your policy and then you put in handbooks or in practices what would be developmentally appropriate. So, for instance, if you look at our former dress code policy, he said it really was discriminatory. In fact, that was their criticism, and that was, by the way, that was only 2013, so it wasn't that long ago. But we also have to remember that we cannot discriminate against any protected classes. And so I think that he gave us some good advice, and I do think that whatever the schools decide to do in terms of what's appropriate at Center versus what is appropriate at Marsden versus what's appropriate at Hampton Academy, to your point, the administrators are going to have to enforce. So I just think that, that's kind of where the rubber meets the road, is that it's about how do they enforce it? And he even went so far as to say that, to say specifically that it's about what are the community standards versus what are the school standards? And that, just things that you have to keep in mind when you do write a policy. So it was, to me, it was, it was good advice, and it's somebody that is writing these policies for, you know, districts from pre-K to, you know, seniors and high school, right? And we only have a pre-K to grade eight. So I do like the fact that the new policy is somewhat a little bit more loosely defined, but that's where you get into, it's flexible enough to meet the needs of all three schools, and yet the, the schools, through their handbook, can define them in ways that is most appropriate or that makes sense.
This says, "Students must not wear caps, hats, or other headgear." I, how?
Yes.
I get the further question.
Above that.
I have a further question.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I do not feel that backwards baseball caps are religious or are any baseball cap worn in a building. They've taught, been taught from preschool down, up, that you don't wear a hat in respect for a building. I have been in schools that have had baseball caps in classes.
Right.
And the minute they see me, they remove them because they think I'm going to say something to them, which I'm not. But does that cover that?
It does. So the policy says no hats. If you go up two paragraphs.
Yep.
Enforcement must accommodate clothing worn by students as an expression of religious beliefs. For example, headscarves, and worn by students with disabilities, for example, protective helmets. Enforcement, and then there's, there's a thing about hair, so...
So what I would do then is say, just add to that, number two, "Students must not wear caps, hats, or other headgear, except as described in the accommodations above."
Sure, sure.
Just add that, except as described.
That's completely fair, yes.
In the accommodations above. So this is the new one, right?
Yes, so the front, yeah, so page, basically 81 and 82 are the new one, 83 was the old one, just as a comparison.
Yep.
Yeah, and that one is really dated.
And I do, the other thing that I really appreciated is on the back page. "School staff shall not confront students on dress code violations in a manner that unnecessarily disciplines or publicly shames the student. When a school staff member or school administrator discusses a dress code violation with a student, it is recommended that another adult be present, et cetera." So I like the idea that these are going to be handled privately and quietly.
You need to go back to shoes, though.
Yep.
Because you can't have just shoes. You have to have, this is what I would put, "Shoes, sneakers, or sandals that are appropriate for safe travel around the school environment and participation in specific areas of study." You've got to have sneakers in there, you can't just have shoes.
Well, can, can I make a suggestion? Can we table this one for tonight and do just a little bit more work on it?
Yeah, absolutely.
And bring it back again?
Sure.
So if people have suggestions, can we funnel them to you, Wendy?
Sure. There is a, no, I will say the second, I'm sorry, the very first paragraph does address that it has to be suitable for school wear.
Yeah.
Can't be a danger to any person, et cetera. So there is some, but we can work on that a little more, yeah.
Okay, so I need a motion, I need a motion to table this till our next meeting. And second?
Sure.
Jenny?
Yeah.
Discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor of tabling this? Okay. And if people have thoughts on this, funnel them to Wendy, and we can see if we can put it back together and...
Sounds good.
All right. The next one that we have is, I'm sorry.
JJJ.
Thank you.
It's on the back, okay. This is JJIC. This is Eligibility for Athletics and Extracurricular School Activities. The, the only change I might suggest, if you look at the first red paragraph, the last sentence in that, in that paragraph, it said, "Probation period or by not engaging in the plan," it says, "will result in a student being removed." I think I would, I would put a "may" in there.
Sorry, where was that?
It's...
I had trouble finding it.
It's right in here.
Okay, gotcha.
And there's another "may" in the last big red paragraph. Additionally, students, the last sentence, "Students may be dismissed."
Yep, yep.
So that was my only suggestion.
Agreed.
But I would make a motion to accept this as a second read with those two changes. Andrea, you want a second?
No, I have.
I'll second it.
Second, okay, so we have a motion to accept this. Discussion.
Yes. In that second large paragraph, if a student receives an office detention, okay, so that's an office detention, that's not a detention from a classroom teacher, correct?
You're, so we're, I don't know.
In the last big red paragraph.
I got it.
So that's a detention from the office, but not necessarily one from a teacher?
No, that would be, it could be either or.
Okay, well, that might need to be clarified.
Clarified in there. What if we get rid of detention? If a student receives a detention.
Okay, that's better, okay. And then they must serve the detention on or before, is what I would add. On or before attending any game or practice.
Yep.
On the day of that detention. Because the detention time can sometimes be longer than, it can overlap or go at different times, just depending on. And one more question, though, is there any difference between, it says the average 2.0 and a 1.0? Is there like a 1.5 or...
And a 2.0 is considered like a C, and a 1.0 like a D?
Yeah, that's why, D-plus.
At least back in my day, it was.
Okay, all right, just in past years.
I think they were looking at a C, they were trying to keep the C.
Okay, in, in past years, a D.
Well, it's a...
Made students eligible.
It's, it's, it's a "may" result, so...
Okay, so as long as you've added that "may."
Give some flexibility.
Okay, then I'm all good.
So I had offered a motion, it was seconded with just a couple of changes, and then Andrea, you had some language.
I just wanted that, "on or before attending any game or practice," in that second paragraph. And also, if a student receives a detention, just cross off the word "office."
All right, I'll make a friendly amendment. So are folks ready to vote on this as amended twice? Okay, all in favor? There we go.
Thank you.
All right. School athletics. JJJ, it's a second read here, access to public school programs... Access to public school programs by non-public charter school and home educated pupils. This is required by law. I'll make a motion that we accept it. Seconded Frank, discussion? Discussion?
Well, there was one place where it had non-restrict... It's in the first paragraph under A, the restricted.
It was about restrict, more restrictive and less restrictive. I just wanted to make sure we had that correct. On A.
Yeah, no, that's, I think that's, that is, that is what they made. So, "Non-enrolled district students shall not be subject to any policies, procedures, or standards with respect to participation in the district's courses or programs that are more restrictive than those governing the district's enrolled students." So you can't, basically, you can't say that our students have to
Right.
have a B average to participate in something, but if you're homeschooled, you have to have straight As? Right.
This is given to us.
Yep.
I think that was from the state.
Yeah. Further discussion? All those in favor? Okay. And let's see, GBCD, we had a, had a revision.
We did on the number five, I think it was.
We had a couple of little ones, yeah.
We did.
Number five.
Number seven.
Instead of the underlined sentence, instead of covered employees, it should be covered person.
Yep.
And on number seven, designated volunteer, number, letter E is over 18 years of age, should be A. And it should say, let's see, it was, it's over 18 years of age. I guess it says four?
We said and.
And, okay.
We had the word and.
I know it was one of the others.
Yep.
Okay, so we did discuss that last week, last month. So I think this is ready for approval.
I'll make a motion to accept it.
Frank, seconded Ginny. Discussion, last chance. All those in favor?
Question. Mr. Sadler asked for volunteers for the Wednesdays. Did all of those have to go through a criminal check?
It would be in our best interest, absolutely, because they could very well be alone with the students. They will re, they will meet the definition as it is written, because they do come into direct contact. It would be a regular basis and they, so, yes.
So anyone that would like to volunteer better do it sooner than later, because checks are taking a lo, are taking on somewhat longer?
You know, we're actually shocked. We did, Kathy and I were shocked. We did some right before the break and we cut them back in a week or two.
Oh, good.
It's kinda surprising.
Oh, good.
Say U 21, they've been, they've been hosed for, for months.
I know, child care has too, so that's good.
Yep, so we're getting great turnaround. So I would just say, you're right. But sooner than later, we're gonna look at having a pop-up event in probably the summer so we can also continue to make sure that anyone who wants to get in the school has their finger printing done on file. And so we're gonna try to help families with that. And I know that the Department of Safety, I'm sorry, has offered that to us. So we will take advantage of it and we'll do those pop event, pop-up events. Or we can do mass volunteers, right? Yep, so we are looking at that, too.
Okay, we have a set of minutes from Tuesday, December 13th. Someone wanna make a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Moved Frank, seconded Wendy. Discussion? Anybody have anything in those?
Nope.
All those in favor? Accepted. And then we had a non-public on December 13th.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Moved Frank, seconded Wendy. Discussion on those? All those in favor? Five zero. Public comment? Anyone? Going once, twice, sold? Okay, we have to go into non-public. Under our SA 91A, number three, Roman numeral two, A. Roll call vote, Ginny?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Yes.
Andrea? And yes.